The Reno City Planning Commission, date July 21st, 2022, was kicking off with item number one, Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Villanueva, would you lead us?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to item number two, roll call. Heather, will you help us out?
Right, Velto is absent at this time. Draculich?
Here.
Gower?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Munoz is absent at this time. Taylor is absent at this time. Villanueva? You do have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Let's move on to item number three, public comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment. Heather, do we have anybody in the room like to speak today?
It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the Planning Commission as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Planning Commission agenda. Please note that the Planning Commission may not take action upon any matter not agendized for possible action on today's agenda. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name and you will be afforded three minutes. If you are an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment, at this time, please raise your hand. Lastly, while in this room, please be respectful. Warnings will be issued by the presiding officer if there is disruptive behavior and you will be asked to leave chambers if the behavior continues.
Anybody here want to speak? Or do we have anybody, any voicemails or anyone online?
We did not receive any voicemails. We did receive correspondence that was general and not related to any items specific on tonight's agenda. And we do have Amy Pennington on Zoom that would like to speak.
Okay, go ahead, Amy. Amy, there you go.
Hello, everyone. My name is Amy Pennington, and I'm actually a staff member with the city of Reno. I'm a community liaison. And I just wanted to come on here for a few moments and just make sure that the Planning Commission was aware that we have launched the placemaking study for downtown Virginia Street. This is something that we contracted with Gale. They're an urban design firm, and they have developed a survey that has just gone out to the whole community. Last week in the news, it was out. And we're just trying to do our best to make sure that we get the word out to as many people as possible, really encourage everyone to take the survey, and to basically give their feedback of what they would, what they like about downtown, what they don't like, what they'd like to see there, so that we can have a really comprehensive amount of information that comes back. So part one of the public outreach is that Gale is putting out the survey, and so we would ask you to take it. We'd ask everyone that you know, have them take it. And then the second part of the feedback is going to be Gale will take all of the survey information they receive throughout the next four to six weeks, and then they're going to analyze it and put forward a draft vision that they're going to then go back to the community and get some feedback and do some workshops with different groups and the public at large to, I guess, see if there's any gaps that have been missed or anything that needs to be changed before they present it to council in December. So, yeah, so my purpose here is really just to make sure that you all knew that this was happening. There is more information on the website at reno.gov/engage, and there's a placemaking study icon on that page. I did share the links with Heather, so she's able to make sure that the Planning Commission gets those. And then I just invite you to share it with the rest of the community and anyone that you may be in contact with. We're just trying to spread the word and make sure everyone gets it. So that's all I'm here to do today. Just make sure you all hear about that and have a great rest of your meeting.
Thanks, Amy. Heather, any requests to speak forms?
No, not for this item.
Okay. We'll close item number three, public comment, and move on to item, I'm sorry, yeah, item number four, approval of minutes for the July 6th meeting.
Commissioner Villanueva, for the record, I move to approve the minutes from the July 6th meeting.
Mr. Gower, a second.
All in favor?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner-
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Johnson, I have to abstain as I was not at the July 6th meeting.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Closing item number four, moving on to item number five, presentation and discussion. Heather, do we have any presentation?
No, we do not.
Okay, just checking. All right, closing item number five, moving on to item number six, public hearings. Any person who has chosen to provide his or her public comment when a public hearing is heard will need to do so, will need to so indicate on the request to speak form provided to the secretary. Alternatively, you may provide your comment when item three, public comment, is heard at the beginning of this meeting. All right, we'll move on to item 6.1, case number LDC 22-00080, Elite Boat and RV Storage. We'll take a presentation from the applicant.
Hi, my name is Sherry Stanoff, and I'm very, very brief here. It's like three minutes. I could, there's no way. Anyway, good evening, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to review our conditional use permit application. Both my husband and I experienced that wonderful loss of job during the COVID epidemic, and because of health reasons, I wasn't able to return full-time to work. So we kind of took a leap of faith, decided that we were going to open our own business. My husband has a lot of experience working in boat and RV storage facilities along with selling boats for 15-plus years. So we decided that we would go ahead and open up a facility to store boats and RVs. We looked at several properties, both in Sparks Inn in Reno, and we chose our location at 9716 South Virginia Street. Basically, because it was in the south area, we're trying to look at those demographics, trying to get the, I had a must bang for our buck, getting our higher-end customers, hence the word elite in our name. We're so tricky. But we, one of the key elements when we picked out the site was that it's not on a main street. It's off the main street. A couple of the other places we looked at, just, there's too crowded to try to have traffic come in and out with a boat, with an RV. The other advantage of this is that it has a backlot, and it prevents us, I mean, it keeps us from being able to keep all of the units that are being dropped off or picked up on the backlot with no interruption. We are located, if you're familiar with South Reno, we're same driver that goes into Winco. We make a left into the Foothill Commerce Center, and we are the first unit past the AT&amp;T building on the left-hand side. We have a little route that goes to the backlot. Very rarely is there anybody over there, maybe a few cars, when they, our next-door neighbor is a gymnastics. So during those times, they will, sometimes some of those spaces will be used. This facility had previously housed the car collections of a couple different tenants, so it seemed perfect for us. Has a large open floor plan, and it's easily accessible by two large roll-up doors on the backlot. Also has a front roll-up door that we occasionally use. However, we try to be very conscientious about the businesses around us, including, again, the gymnastics right next door to us. During their open hours, there's lots of children, a lot of kids, a lot of parents, so more traffic. So we try not to do, plan any of our pickups or drop-ups off the front. It's usually always in the back. We haven't made any changes to the building, including lighting, landscaping, nor do we plan to make any changes. Again, the facility was, for us, it seemed like the perfect location and perfect property for us to begin our business.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll now take a presentation from the city of Reno.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, commissioners. Good to see everybody on Zoom and in person. Mr. Gilbert, it is an honor to present this item, which is the Elite Boat and RV Storage Conditional Use Permit Request. To start, as Sherry mentioned, the location of the site, south of downtown in Ward 2. It's sort of sandwiched in between Interstate 580 and South Virginia Street. Access is from the southwest off South Virginia Street to South Meadows Marketplace, which accesses both the Winco parking lot and then also the Foothill Commerce Center, which this site is a part of, as you'll see on your screen. Basic project information, site size is 1.77 acres. Zoning for this parcel is mixed-use suburban. Zoning in the area is entirely mixed-use suburban as well. You'll see the hatched red area on your screen. This is a conditional use permit request to allow for a mini warehouse facility with the purpose of storing RVs, boats, and other similar large vehicles. Staff identified four key issues during review of this application, and those are the four issues which I'll talk about tonight. They are compatibility of this use with its surroundings, screening of this use, particularly the outdoor component of this use, security lighting, and then access and circulation. To go back to that first key issue, see the site outlined in red on your screen. This site is compatible with its surroundings. The use is appropriate for the zoning district and appropriate for the area. To the north and east are that Foothill Commerce Center. To the south is an AT&amp;T building. It's a building, but it's largely communication equipment, and it's largely unmanned. To the west, fronting on South Virginia Street, so completely separate accesses and auto sales and repair facility. There's been similar previous uses of this site. As the applicant mentioned, there was a private car collection which was stored here in the early 2000s. Storage of that collection actually included some custom manufacturing onsite. This is a request for a mini warehouse facility, although it's not the typical mini warehouse. This is vehicle storage. That sentence on the screen is a sentence from the definition of mini warehouse in our code, which lumps storage of outdoor, outdoor storage of operable vehicles into the mini warehouse use. And that's what's proposed here, storage of vehicles inside the building, and then in that rear yard with adequate and appropriate screening from adjacent properties, which segues nicely into the second issue, screening for the outdoor storage. Adequate screening exists onsite and will be maintained for the life of the project. There is mature landscaping and trees in the area circled in green. There's also a six-foot-tall chain-link fence with vinyl slats, and then gated access to that rear yard, which will remain in place. There was adequate security lighting for the outdoor storage area. Both code enforcement and police feel that the wall-mounted fixtures on the building provide adequate lighting. That level of lighting will be maintained. And then finally, when you talk about these large vehicles, you want to make sure that there is not any impediment to traffic flow and access and circulation for the entire Foothill Commerce Center. We have conditions proposed and which will be in place to ensure that there is no obstruction of that traffic. So that concludes the body of my presentation. In closing, this is a conditional use permit. The required findings are on your screen, and staff feels those findings can be made. Therefore, staff's recommendation is approval, subject to the conditions in the staff report. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions as is the applicant. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We'll move to hear any public comment. Heather, do we have any public comment on item 6.1?
We received no voicemails, but we did receive correspondence that was received before tonight's meeting and distributed to the Planning Commission, and I have no requests to speak forms.
Okay, thank you very much. Now for the commissioners' disclosures. Commissioner Villanueva kicks off.
I'm familiar with the site.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Johnson, familiar with the site and received correspondence from the neighboring property owner?
Mr. Gower, same disclosures.
Commissioner Draculich, same disclosures. All right, moving on for, down to the commissioners for questions for the applicant or the city of Reno. Please do. Thank you.
This, one question for the planner. Hello. So generally, I think this is a great site for, for this type of use. But with the boats, do you foresee any issues? I mean, I don't know how large these boats are going to be, and you don't anticipate any problems. I mean, it's a pretty large entry, but just want to-
In terms of access to the site?
In and out, yeah.
Yeah, thank you for the question, Joey Winter, associate planner. Engineering staff looked at this. We feel that there's adequate room to maneuver those boats. And again, it's just, that sentence on your screen there talks about operable vehicles, but it's not heavy-duty trucks. It's not semi-trailers. It's not anything that's too large to navigate in and out of this site.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Commissioners on Zoom, anybody have any questions? Okay, neither do I. Does any want to move it over to general discussion between us? Also happy to take a motion.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Johnson, I'll make a motion on this.
Thank you.
Case of LDC 22-00080, Elite Boat and RV Storage. Based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the conditional use permit, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report, and I can make all of the findings.
Commissioner Villanueva, a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes. Thank you. All right, moving on to item 6.2, which is case number LDC 22-00081, The Wayfair. It looks like we'll have a presentation from the applicant.
Hi, my name is Amy Lemon, and I'm the owner-operator of The Wayfair. I'm not 100% sure how to, okay. All right, so we are going to be a cut-and-wrapped cheese and specialty food retail store in Midtown Reno. This one? Yeah. Okay. So our products and services, we're going to have a gourmet meat and cheese counter, a grab-and-go area, cheese-focused kitchen wares, a specialty drink case catering, and we're also going to be able to provide services to local restaurants in the area. We're located at 24 California Avenue, Unit B. And the conditional use permit that we're looking for is a packaged alcohol permit to be able to sell beer and wine specifically to go. We're projecting about 20% of our sales in the beverage category, which includes alcoholic and non-alcoholic beverages, and we really see this as a convenience for our customers who are coming in to pick up cheese plates and charcuterie plates to go, being able to grab a bottle of wine as well. This is the layout of the restaurant, and you can't really see it on this, but all the beer and wine will actually be in the refrigerated section behind the counter, so nobody will be able to grab it. The staff would actually have to provide it for them. And this is the outside of the building. Currently, we're still doing renovations. It's been under renovation, I'm not sure exactly how long. I know it was Newman's Deli and Kinko's before. We have parking spots in the back, approximately 15 parking spots in the rear of the building, as well as a few parking spots in the front of the building. We're going to be open for Wednesday through Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Those hours could change depending on opening up Monday and Tuesday as well, but I don't see us going past 7:00 p.m. I think that's it. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, presentation from the city of Reno.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Good evening, Nate. It's a pleasure to be before you tonight. My name is Brooke Oswald, associate planner, for the record. The case before you is case LDC 22-0081, The Wayfair. The project site is approximately 0.61 acres and is located on the corner of Forest in California. That's just off Virginia Street. This location is generally right between our downtown and where that midtown area starts. The surrounding uses are retail, restaurants. There's adult entertainment, a hotel, a number of offices, a church is nearby also. What they are requesting is that conditional use permit for packaged alcohol sales. Just coming in a little bit closer, as was described, this building is in construction. It has been vacant for several years now, so it is nice to see it being reconstructed. It's very, it's at a critical point, right between our downtown and that midtown area, and this redevelopment here is supportive of several of the master plan, which I'll go over in a minute. So as we look at that Reno, reimagine Reno master plan, it's priority location for infill and redevelopment, which we're starting to see here, and it is an underutilized property. Additionally, it is in close proximity to transit. It's those downtown districts, those neighborhood services that we like to provide, just outside those midtown neighborhoods that we're seeing to the south. And then improving a blighted or a building that has been vacant is a public safety issue. As we look at the Reno renovation, we are in that midtown, sorry, mixed-use downtown river district, and just, and the zoning just to the south of that's that midtown, midtown commercial district. This is subject, as you can see, to, or is in that safescapes area. Because they do, are providing that restaurant with alcohol, that is, that is privileged license that they will have to have. That exempts them from those streetscape standards that we would see and more traditionally in our downtown, and has been before this commission before. Additionally, that reduces their, they do not have to, aren't required to provide the 10% perishable food. They can just provide additional food on that. We have restricted the hours of operation. The hours of operation in that district are 24 hours. We felt it was appropriate to restrict those hours between 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. with that convenience store with packaged alcohol. That due to, we don't anticipate problems with the current applicant, but these do run with the land as we know, and that secures that sort of, that we limit those time and reduce those impacts to those neighboring properties and the hotel to the south. Once again, just to look closer at the project site, that's California Avenue on top, Forest on the west. She's, her location is approximately in the middle of that. We have building permits submitted. They are under construction. We've seen the landscape go in, parking go in, and all that. That all meets our building code, and they are moving forward to finish that. This is an existing building, showing the elevations to one side, a large brick building, and on the other side, we have the smaller offices where, or the smaller commercial units where this business is proposed to be located. With that, staff can make all the applicable findings, and I'll leave you with a motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Appreciate it. All right, I'll move into public comment. Heather, any public comment or requests to speak forms?
We did not receive any voicemails. We did not, oh, I'm, we did not receive any correspondence, and I have no requests to speak forms.
Okay. To the commissioners for disclosures, Commissioner Gower, if you can kick us off?
Mr. Gower, no disclosures.
Commissioner Johnson, I'm familiar with the site.
Commissioner Villanueva, I am familiar with the site. It's not far from where I live. It's in the same neighborhood.
Commissioner Draculich, same disclosures. All right, thank you, guys. We'll go to the commissioners for questions for the applicant or for Brooke.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Johnson?
Go ahead.
I have a question for the applicant, actually, a question and a comment for the applicant.
Yes, sir.
Amy, thank you. My first comment is, thank you for putting those delicious images of food up before I've had dinner. Appreciate that greatly. The question that I have, actually, in looking at the plan on the site, you showed it, an image of the floor plan of the building that has a front entrance and a rear entrance. Are both of those accessible to the public?
Yes, both will, both will be accessible to the public. The back door will be open, and it actually goes into a shared restroom area with the other tenants of the building.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because it appeared from the site plan, that there's no, like sidewalk between the two, the front parking and the back parking. It's just driveway. So I wanted to make sure that if you were in the back parking, you had access-
Yes, you'll have a double-door access into the facility.
Okay, thank you. That answers my questions. Appreciate that. Mr. Sherry, no additional questions?
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Gower?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
I'm good as well. Commissioner Villanueva?
I was just gonna say I'm ready for a motion, if you'd like.
Move it to discussion, and if someone's ready to make a motion, go for it.
Commissioner Villanueva, in the matter of LDC 22-00081, based upon the clients with applicable findings, I recommend that Planning Commission approve the conditional use permit, subject to conditions.
Mr. Gower, a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item 6.3, case number LDC 22-00078, Ormat Solar Project. Looks like we'll get a presentation from the applicant. Go free.
Good evening. My name's Eric Hasty. I'm with Wood Rogers, and I'm representing the applicant, Ormat, Nevada. We're here tonight to talk about Steamboat Hills Solar. We're asking for a major site plan review for hillside development as well as an alternative equivalent for landscaping standards. So for those of you not familiar with the site, this is in South Reno. It's about as far south as you can get in the city of Reno. The parcel is highlighted here in blue. It's part of the overall geothermal production facility that is currently operating right now, and it's bound by US 395 as well as I-580. It's accessed off of Mount Rose Highway from a private road that comes in. It's skated in here, and this is the main entrance into the actual geothermal facility. And then there is a private access road for maintenance into the site. So zooming in a little bit closer, you can see that this site already has some geothermal energy production facilities on it. These are injection wells for geothermal production. The site is master-planned industrial as well as the zoning is industrial. Okay, so the two requests we are going after is a major site plan review for hillside developments for seven megawatt solar facility, and then an alternative equivalent compliance for the landscape standards. This is a project of regional significance since it's over six megawatts. So for the hillside development, this is showing kind of the hillside that we're proposing to put the solar panels on. These yellow areas represent where the solar fields will be, and the blue area is the fenced portion. So with this project, we are proposing minimal grading. The actual only grading that will be, as far as cut-fill, will be just to redirect this road in between these solar fields here. This maintenance road is kind of in the way of where we're proposing to put these, and so this is going to be the only kind of grading that's on there. The technology that they'll be using is different from most solar panels that have been placed, especially the ones that they just did to the west. There was a project they just got done doing where you actually had to grade and flatten out the terrain. But for this, alls you need to do, the minor grading will be just to remove any boulders or anything that could be in the way. And then they actually use steel pipes to go down as the foundation. There's no cement or anything like that. Because we are fencing off these 50 acres, 50-plus acres, we will be dedicating 13 acres of open space as part of this, and this is going to be along these hillsides here, these really steep hillsides. And this is in line with the hillside development standards, trying to protect those, those natural slopes. This diagram right here shows how the articulating arms of the solar panels will allow it to kind of be draped over the hillside, so we'll preserving the natural contours of the hillside. The other portion of this is the alternate equivalent landscape standards. With the industrial zoning, the landscape standards require that the front setback is landscaped, and this includes formal lands- and this includes formal landscaping as well as trees. However, because the, there is no public right-of-way around here, as I described earlier, this would be above here along the parcel line, and it really wouldn't be around the proposed fenced area. So instead, we're proposing to come in and reseed a large portion of the area with native vegetation. This will also be able to go underneath the solar panels to help stabilize the ground. And a lot of this area was burned a year ago in the Petrella Fire. So more, there are a lot of trees that are on-site that are shown in the site plan. However, these are no longer living. So there's not really any impact to the trees. And a majority of the trees that were alive on-site prior to this are located outside of the proposed fenced area. This is similar, this landscape standards are similar to what has been proposed throughout this geothermal facility. So going to the NAB and then hearing some comments from the city, there are some concerns with this area, especially considering the historic mining as well as the altered andesite buckwheat that's known to be in this area. So for that, we, they've already done some, Ormat is familiar with this area, and there's no known historical mining sites in this area. And any type of mercury that's naturally occurring, the soils that are typically found with that were not found in the geotechnical report, which we submitted to the city of Reno. A US Fish and Wildlife survey, our study was done in this area to map and kind of monitor the altered andesite buckwheat that is known to be in this area. And you can see from this map that these blue portions are the historical areas where it's known to be, and this pink outline is the soils where it's found. It's found in very specific type of soil, and the project we're proposing is down here in the Mayburg area. So it's far away from that, but we will have a qualified biologist come out and survey prior to grading permit is issued. We will have a, this whole area of 54 acres will be fenced to keep out wildlife and protect them as well from getting into the solar panels and getting injured. Another concern that was brought up was the view, and the view shed. And this was kind of two portions, one was a safety standard from, or safety concern with along I-580, some of the reflectiveness or something like that coming from the solar panels themselves. But industry standard, usually you have a non-reflective paint painted on any surface that can be reflective. Of course, they are, the panels themselves are made of glass, but these are, these are just like the ones that you see on your, on your house. They're absorbed, they're designed to absorb the sun rays, not to reflect them, not like the Southern Nevada projects that do that. So they're, it's, the chance of reflection is very, very minimal. It's no different than a parking lot. This is, this project is actually less visible than some of the other ones, especially the one that's up by TMCC and DRI campus, which is right next to 395. But to demonstrate the, how this is going to look, we provided a view shed analysis. And so each one of these pictures here shows the, each solar site or solar field, there's eight that are proposed, and each area that is in green is highlighting pretty much an area anywhere within a two-mile radius where it will be visible from. You can see that on I-580, this area right here, when you're coming right on, heading southbound on from Mount Rose Highway is the only spot that's really going to be visible from I-580. And this is about a half mile away. And then the residents to the east will also be able to see some of these solar fields, but those are also located half a mile away. These panels are only going to be six feet tall off the ground, and they also are going to be conforming to the natural contours of the land, so it will help minimize their visual impact. But just to give you an idea of what you can actually see when you're driving down, heading southbound, if you're heading northbound, these would be behind you, you can't see them closer to the site because the I-580 is lower than the solar panels are. So this is only visible here, just to highlight where it's actually showing, we're showing it right there. So you can see it's not going to be too big of an impact. And then this is the view from the east side of the residence. This is actually from the nearest resident, this would be looking out in their backyard, and it's highlighted right here in the dark. So you can see that the, the impact is going to be pretty minimal. So in conclusion, the applicant is aware of all the conditions and is, believes we can comply with them, and I'm happy to answer any questions, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. And we'll take a presentation from the city of Reno. Thanks, Grace.
Good evening, commissioners, Mr. Gilbert, I hope you're thoroughly embarrassed now, all giving you a shout-out. All right, so Grace Whitehead Associate Planner, here to discuss the Ormat Solar Project. So the subject site is located in South Reno, south of the Summit Mall and Galena High School, between South Virginia Street and I-580, a little over a half a mile south of Mount Rose Highway. So taking a closer look at the site, you can see the Steamboat Hills geothermal facilities, which are operated by Ormat. The applicant is requesting a major site plan review for hillside development and an alternative equivalent compliance for landscape methods. Key issues associated with this project were grading and protection of sensitive areas. So the subject site is zoned industrial, it's also master planned industrial, and it's surrounded by industrial and open space type zoning. So the applicant is presenting, is proposing to install a seven-megawatt solar field to help power their geothermal activity. Accessory alternative utility systems are allowed by right in the industrial zone. Approximately 44% of the site contains slopes of 15% or greater, which triggers hillside development. The applicant will utilize a new technology that significantly reduces the grading. This grading will be primarily for removing rocks and relocating the road, as Eric had mentioned, and to dig for two footings for each panel. So this will allow the slopes to remain fairly undisturbed, making the solar panels a good use for this land. So since this site triggers hillside development, they are required to preserve at least 13 acres as open space. This will be primarily located on the eastern edge of the parcel, where some of those more significant slopes are located. And this site was also recently burned in that Petrella Fire, which eliminated a lot of this natural vegetation. So the alternative equivalent compliance the applicant is applying for will allow them to utilize a native seed mix in the open space area to help bring the site back to its natural condition prior to the fire. So I wanted to provide some of these view sheds, as Eric had kind of gone over already. This is where you'll see those solar panels and kind of a good, it gives you a good idea of what you'll see from the freeway and what that visibility will look like. And then this is actually from the site, looking towards I-580 to give a general idea of just kind of how far it is. So I'm sure you guys saw the email from Scott Carey from the Nevada Divisions of Land. He recommended we kind of reword condition seven, staff is comfortable with that, it's kind of a clarification, just a rewording to make sure that some of those sensitive species we see on-site or potentially see on-site are protected. So for this project, we have general findings, major site plan review findings, and alternative equivalent compliance findings. Here are the major site plan review findings, which staff believes can be met. Staff also believes the alternative equivalent compliance findings can be met. The recommended motion is on your screen. If the commission likes, we would recommend you add in the language to amend condition seven with your motion, if the commission is comfortable with that. That's my presentation, and I am available for questions.
Thank you, Grace, appreciate it. Right now, moving into public comment, I do have a request to speak form from Barbara Rainey in opposition. And you have three minutes, and thank you for speaking.
Thank you, not necessarily in opposition, I just really, I'm using the overhead if you don't mind. Thank you very much, back to three minutes. My name is Barbara Rainey, I'm a 40-year Truckee Meadows resident in Geiger Grade area of Virginia foothills. In our community, we have the City of Reno master plan. We have the Mount Rose corridor plan. We have the RTC South Truckee Meadows Intermodal Plan. We have the NDOT Mount Rose Scenic Byway Highway to the Sky Corridor Management Plan. We have the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency Regional Plan. We have the Washoe County Master Plan. And, you know, I love Reno, I've been here 40 years, most of my life, and I'm so excited when I see all of these plans and all of the great things we talk about doing to protect our view sheds, our ridge lines, and our scenic beauty. As a matter of fact, on your City of Reno, you've got the hot air balloons on here. And I don't know if you know, the history of the balloon races comes out of the old Reno Sparks Special Events Committee from the early 1980s. We used to have a parade called the Fair to Air Parade at the end of August for the state fair, and then there was the air races, and there was nothing in between after Labor Day. So a bunch of us got together, and we had the Reno Sparks Special Events Committee, and we all worked as a team, we had the City of Reno, we had all of the stakeholders, all of the casinos, and we worked together. And I see that lack of working together when I see all of these disjointed plans. The City of Reno has not been the best neighbor to those of us in South Reno. Geiger Grade, a lot of rural, beautiful area. And the welcome gift we got so far was the Veterans Roundabout. And this is our little gift basket here, and we have low-income apartments, about 900 of them. We have the most obscenely high-density townhouses in here now. We have a gas station over here, and the bow on the gift basket recently is now we have a Taco Bell. So all of us who have been looking forward to what you're going to do to improve and enhance our community and our area, that's what we've seen so far. And now we have this. I took this picture today from my neighbor's deck. The picture that they showed is from down low looking up, where this area here is blocking the site. This is an actual picture from our deck. And it's beautiful, isn't it? But something's missing. I know what it needs. It needs some solar panels. I'd also like to address that no one addressed the earthquakes. There's a huge swarm of 230 in 2018. There was a major earthquake in 1900 that actually shut down the hot springs. Guys, we're better than this, let's work together like we worked together in the early days. Get everyone together, and let's step back a minute and actually do some planning, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Heather, was there any other comment online or voicemail?
Correspondence was received for this item that was distributed to the Planning Commission before the meeting, and we did receive one voicemail, which we will play right now.
Thank you.
I want a return call, please, my number is 775-851-5086. I live in the Steamboat Spring area and got this LDC 2200078 Ormat Solar Project. 104-acre, located 3,500 feet from Mount Rose, is where I am at. This sounds like the area that where I live, behind my home on Steamboat Springs. Is this, what is this solar photovoltaic solar field that you're talking about? I need to know so that I can see whether I need to comment or petition or whatever I have to do. I need a phone call back, please, when you get back in Monday. My name is Tony Durham, and you sent me a senior City of Reno Community Development Department notice, parcel 017-550-13. And below that, 4070-0700-0755. Please return my call, I'll call you back on Monday to get hold of you, bye.
All right, thank you. Anything else, Heather? Okay, we'll move it to the commissioners for disclosures, please. Commissioner Gower?
Hey, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gower, I have previously visited the site and reviewed and reviewed the correspondence.
Commissioner Johnson?
Commissioner Johnson, same disclosures.
Commissioner Villanueva, I'm familiar with the site, I drive by it pretty regularly, but I did not actually visit the site. I read some emails as well, thank you.
Commissioner Dracula, same disclosures. All right, we'll kick it off to the commissioners for questions for the applicant or the city of Reno. Commissioner Villanueva?
Thank you, Chairman, or Vice Chair.
Correct, correct.
Question for the applicant. Hello.
Hi.
So thank you for the condition, the additional change to the condition number seven. It says, shall work with a qualified botanist. What type of botanist? I imagine you guys don't know who that's going to be yet. Is there any way we can get someone recommended by the city? Or what do you all typically do when hiring specialists?
So I'm not exactly sure what the city is going to require for those qualifications, but it's, it could typically be somebody who knows how to go out and identify the specific plant. So.
Okay, so not someone that you guys have on, ready to go, that you've worked with in the past? I can give you, basically give you the answers you want to see?
It's going to be a third party that most likely would survey the site.
Okay, I have other questions, I just need to collect my thoughts, thank you.
No problem, thank you. Commissioners on Zoom?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair/Vice Chair, however responding, referring to you tonight. Oh, and I guess I'm also supposed, I didn't realize, because the view's tiny on my screen, that Nathan's up there, so shout out to Nathan as well. I have a question for Grace. Grace, in one of the, one of the comments that came in on this, and I thought it was an interesting one, and I'm not sure how the city's looking at it, but in the staff report, it talks about a solar field being an accessory utility system serving the geothermal plant. And I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around what I generally think of as an accessory use in this particular situation where it's, you know, the, basically the entire site, at least it's been identified to us, is being covered by, you know, this particular item. So can you maybe walk me through how, you know, the, you know, idea of the scale of this still fits in as an accessory with respect to the code?
Yes, definitely, Grace Whitehead Associate Planner, for the record. So all of the power generated through this solar field will only generate, only go to generating the geothermal. So none of this power will be sent to the grid, it is auxiliary and completely dependent on the geothermal within the Ormat facility. So that is kind of why it's considered the accessory to the larger facility as a whole. Although it is a larger solar field, all of that power is completely contained in that area.
Okay, but the, I guess maybe then the question is, what, what is, what exactly is our site? Because if we're looking at this, at this industrial zone piece of property, that is not, you know, I get that it's all interconnected, I think, as mentioned in the disclosures, on-site, they extend on both sides of the freeway and that. So looking at it in the, in the context of how we're supposed to be looking at, you know, this site-type generation, it seems like this site in and of itself, the only use that's being done there, you know, is, you know, the solar field, the wells are... The wells are, are there, I see that. But again, it seems like it's an accessory to the overall ORMAT operation. But how does it, I mean, is there industrial zoning? Does that allow for just a purely power generation activity as an actual primary use?
I guess the, the connection is they can't, they're restricted for other reasonings to, they're prevented from selling that energy anywhere else or providing it to anything else. So that the connection is more of what the energy is being used for, and it is to, to power the, the, the site as a whole, which is that ORMAT facility. So I see the disconnect, but it, that's kind of where that connection was made.
Okay. I appreciate that answer. I think that was the first question that I had. I'll turn it back to Commissioner Villanueva and again, see if I have anything else. Thank you, Grace.
Commissioner Villanueva, go ahead.
Thank you. So the, so Grace, I think you can answer this. So the applicant mentioned fencing around the solar panels. And practically speaking, I understand why that's needed. But then at the same time, I also have apprehension because, I mean, that is an open space, and then we're completely blocking it off. Is there any way that we can do without the fencing? Or is that absolutely?
Yeah, and I think there's generally concerns about the site not being fenced off and not having those protections or security. I, I also think it's important to note, I mean, the area of this site, or where the site is located, is generally undisturbed, and it's, you know, to the completely south of town, and it borders the Washoe County jurisdictional boundary. But it is zoned and master-planned industrial. And so I think this is probably the least impactful use in, in having that ability to kind of fence in to protect the solar panels from whatever it may be. I think they, they have that ability.
Thank you, that's a good answer.
If I may, Vice Chair Dracula, I have a question for the applicant. Kind of trying to understand a better reason, so why that many arrays? And what is the true intent? Obviously, it feels like it's a business running more efficiently, but if you give me a little background as to why you guys made this decision and why you need seven megawatts?
Yeah, Eric Hacey for the record. So like Grace was saying, that this, this goes to prevent parasitic loading. So basically, the geothermal power uses, all the processes will use some of their own power that they generate in order to produce geothermal power. So this solar panels, these solar panels will provide energy to that so that they can push out more geothermal energy to the grid. So it's, it's making, it's, it's more efficient. It's just, just as, as if you had a solar panel on your roof. It's cost-effective.
Okay. And that many arrays was needed for, obviously to meet what you guys needed to accomplish, just so I understand that?
Yeah, all, all seven megawatts will just be used by the facility itself.
Okay.
So that does not go into the grid.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Johnson, did you want to come back in?
I do have, Eric, if you can come back up, I have a, kind of a, a question now in terms of, when I'm looking at this array, and I appreciate the description and the image of, of how these are going to be put together, when I zoom in on the, the image, I guess the, the, how, wow, that was a disjointed comment, sorry. In the array that you're showing, what, each one of those panels has two supports on it. What's the size or the length of each one of those panels?
I do not know that. We have the, an applicant representative here. Do you?
I don't, I don't know the exact size.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure.
Okay, well, let me, maybe, maybe I'll, I'll back that up for a half second. So when I look at, at the image and the plans, it looks like it's kind of defined with about a twenty-foot, I guess, break in terms of each one of the little units that shows up on the site plan. So, you know, twenty feet across, I think a standard panel is usually about ten feet. So I, I guess the concern that I have is, yes, we don't have to do a bunch of grading, but I'm seeing what appears to be, you know, hundreds, if not, you know, in the thousands of the numbers of points where we're going to have to drill for these supports. So I guess the question is, what are we, you know, what type of, of, if there's no concrete that's being put in, what type of hole, what type of depth, what type of equipment is going to be run, need to be run all over that hillside in order to provide that level of support?
Yeah, thank you. I'll, I'll try to answer that as best as I can. So I, if I could use the overhead real quick, I put a, there's a picture on here that I included in the, in the submittal that it kind of gives you an idea of, of the underneath portion. It looks like there's about three or four solar panels for, for each one of the footings. And as you can see in this, in this picture here, so these are steel.
Eric, we, we can't see the, we can't see the overhead.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. To answer your question, there's about maybe ten panels for each footing. And so in each one of these footings, it's just a steel beam that is going to be driven down, pounded down into the ground. And so the whole site underneath the solar panels does, will have disturbance. It's not going to have the traditional grading that you have with the cut and fills, but there is going to be equipment going in there that is going to disturb the site. And that's why we included that thirteen acres, because we, we figured that there of the fifty-four acres that are going to be contained within that fence, the majority of it is going to be disturbed. It's just not going to be graded as the traditional cut and fill. And so over time, the, so that, let me go back, the, the actual topography of, the natural topography of the hill will be preserved, because we're not doing that cut and fill. And then once we come in and establish the native seed mix and in there, it, it will, it will kind of mimic the, the natural contours. The other thing that's kind of a benefit of this is, once this life, the life of this facility is done, if they decide they don't need it anymore, then, once they remove all the equipment, the natural hillside, the natural topography is still going to be there. It's not going to have a, a traditional foot, you know, a surface as, as a, as a building would, so.
Okay, so what, just to be clear, so there's not an anticipated excavation? The idea is that you're basically going to drive, for lack of a better term, drive a pile in the ground, and the support for the solar panels is friction of the earth rather than actual excavation of materials?
Correct.
Okay, and that was, I guess, going back with one of the other comments that we received, was concern about, you know, disturbance of, you know, potential soils and other items. It does raise some questions on some of the other potential archaeological disturbances, but I do appreciate the, I guess, the approach to minimizing the excavation, so. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. I can't see you right now, Commissioner Gower, but do you have any questions?
Thank you. I do not have any other, any questions, no.
Okay. Commissioner Villanueva, please.
I have a question for Grace regarding condition eight. So we, we all have in our pocket the Washoe County Health District letter regarding concerns about disturbing soils. So I see one of the conditions, a remediation plan for mercury found on site shall be prepared by the applicant and reviewed by NDEP and any other applicable regulating, regulating agency. So say, okay, the, the applicant prepares a remediation plan, and it's, what exactly is NDEP looking at? I mean, not, excuse me, that's not a question for you. What exactly, we get an answer from NDEP, and then says, okay, this is, this remediation plan works, and then what happens? Or, or they say it doesn't work, and then what happens?
Sure, so they, they would have to, if there were mercury found on site, and, and they did do a preliminary geotechnical report, none, none was found, there aren't initial concerns of that. If they were found, they would correspond with NDEP, make sure NDEP was comfortable with whatever remediation plan they put forward, and they would provide us that correspondence or approval from NDEP so that we're comfortable, since that is out of our scope, that we're comfortable, that NDEP is comfortable with whatever they proposed.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? We would like to move into general discussion. Someone want to kick that off?
I'll kick it off.
Go for it.
So I, personally, I feel like I need more time. I, I, I want to look into this more, so I, I don't know that I'm ready. It is a pretty big project. It is on a hills, a significant hillside. We have information here, but I, I just feel like I would like to look into this further beyond today's meeting, just to get some more information, given the size of this type of, the scope of this type of development. I'll defer to you guys, whatever, whatever you think.
Commissioners on Zoom, oh, good, Commissioner Gower.
Hey, Mr. Vice Chair, I'll just chime in by saying that I've visited the site a couple times now, originally with the, the previous geothermal expansion project that was proposed on the site a couple of years ago, and then more recently about three months ago. And, you know, I understand the, the concerns regarding the, you know, the historic activities on the site, the bio, biology concerns with the, you know, the buckwheat, the, the wildlife. But I, I have seen the, you know, ORMAT's operations on this site, and the, you know, just frankly, in my opinion, and I, I work in, in this field, and they're doing a good job. So I guess my level of confidence is quite high in, in this project, and that they're going to do it really well, and adhere to all of the particular findings and requirements that are beyond the City of Reno, you know, state requirements as well. So I just wanted to articulate that, and then also point out to the commenter, talking about the, you know, the developments and the number of plans in South Reno there, you know, certainly seeing a lot of changes in that part of town, as we are in other parts of town. You know, that, that area in particular there, as you mentioned where the roundabout is, is seeing some incredible growth, and it's, you know, it's striking to see that. And I, I certainly understand the concern, seeing another project on top of it. So I just, I see that too. And there are a lot, a lot of plans overlaying in that area. You know, a lot of, a lot of planners are involved in that, and, you know, for good or bad, that's kind of where we're at in terms of what that area looks like. In, in terms of this project, you know, as mentioned, I think Grace pointed it out in her staff report, this project is a project of regional significance, so it will go from the City of Reno to the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency for, you know, a look in terms of a project of regional significance at that, you know, regional scale. And I think that's an opportunity for that type of broader coordination outside of the City of Reno that you were looking for. So I just wanted to point that out as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gower. I'll jump in. Commissioner Dracula, I, I'm kind of with Commissioner Gower on a lot of those things. I, I do think the City of Reno gave some conditions that satisfied me, were, you know, some of my initial concerns. I also see the view shed as being an issue for, for some, maybe not most, but ultimately still something, you know, significant to be looking at. You know, the pictures we have from the City of Reno and the applicant, I mean, they do show that it is not a massive view shed, but also, you know, some neighbors will have a completely different opinion, and I don't live there, and I, I don't know exactly what they see. So I, I see that. But much of what we said, Mr. Gower, or Commissioner Gower, I'm in alignment with. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Johnson, I think that the, overall, I, I'm in support of, you know, this, the idea of solar project and, you know, renewable energy. I think some of the concerns that I have with this, or maybe less with the project and more with our own process. I mean, it seems to me that, you know, we're in a, you know, an undeveloped area that's zoned industrial, and we're still, I, I guess in my mind, kind of approaching a utility field in a way that, you know, as an, as an accessory use, like we're putting it in, you know, on top of a garage or something like that. So I, I guess, maybe less about this project and more about looking at the, the code and the process in general for how do we apply, you know, findings or thoughts to something that is essentially entirely a solar project. That said, I do appreciate the approach that's being taken with this, you know, the, the concerns about some of the, you know, the excavation and the disturbance have certainly been addressed. And really, that's where, in coming in on this, it is ultimately looking at the, you know, development for hillside development, cuts and fills. And I think this approach actually handles that better than, than many others that we've seen. So when it comes down to the specific findings for this type of project, I am able to make them. I believe that it does all of those things. I guess the, the two comments that I would have would be, maybe we need to take a look at it from a city standpoint on how to address this larger array. And then I guess I would also maybe just make a comment in the staff report that, from a master plan conformance standpoint, I would disagree with putting in that this is, that this is supportive of policy two-point-two-B for underutilized properties. I think this is a, you know, a rural industrial site that is not underutilized in the way that our master plan looks at it. So I think it definitely meets the, the requirements that we look at for, you know, moving to renewable energy, but not necessarily on an undeveloped site. So anyway, that's my thoughts. Commissioner Villanueva, I understand your concern, but I, I'm not sure that there's anything that I can see in what we're being asked to review with the, the cuts and fills that I don't have enough information to make the, the review of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Commissioner Villanueva?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I mean, I guess because we only have a couple of days to review all of this stuff and, and take a thoughtful approach, because I am conflicted in the sense that, you know, I think renewable energy is a really good thing. And I think if we can use more of it, that's good, but at the same time, you know, the environmental impact, it is hillside. And so I guess, maybe not necessarily more information, but just more me needing more time to do a thoughtful analysis, pros and cons type situ, situation. But ultimately, with the information I do have, it does appear that the, I can make all the findings so far. So, yeah, I'm good.
Good. Thank you. If there's no more discussion, I'm open to a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'm ready to make a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Gower.
Okay. In the case number LDC-two-two-dash-zero-zero-zero-seven-eight ORMAT Solar Project, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the major site plan review and alternative equivalent compliance subject to the conditions, including the recommended change to condition number seven provided by Mr. Carey at the State Lands.
Commissioner Johnson, I'll second that motion, and I can make all the findings.
Okay. Heather, do you want to do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dracula?
Yes.
Commissioner Gower?
Yes.
Commissioner Villanueva?
Yes.
Motion passes. Good luck with your project. We will close item six, public hearings, and move on to item number seven, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. Is that Commissioner Johnson tonight?
Yes, I'll take it tonight. So we have a meeting- So uh, we have a meeting next week, Team RPA meeting, um, a couple items on the agenda, some regional plan conformance reviews. Uh, one item for note for uh, I guess, city of Reno, one of the items is the, I think, the culmination at the regional level for that Verdi project where we uh, the the sphere of influence was returned back to this to Washoe County, uh and they are amending their master plan to actually give it the industrial designation, which is closer to what it was in the city of Reno, I believe. Uh, so those are that, and there's one in the the regional planner view in the city of Sparks. Uh, and then the only other highlight is that there will be an election of new officers, so it will be my last meeting as the chair of the Regional Planning Commission. So um, that's my report.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Johnson, appreciate it. Uh, closing item number seven, moving on to item number eight, staff announcements. Nate, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Nate Gilbert, Senior Planner. Uh, just an update on uh some recent council actions. Yesterday's council uh meeting, council did move uh to adopt the Coral Academy rezoning um uh specific plan district and uh moved to approve the Allen Glen Drive zoning map amendment as recommended by the Planning Commission. Our next meeting on on August third, uh, will have about six items on it. It should be a somewhat robust agenda. Uh, but we do tentatively have a s- staff presentation and training. We may move this depending on on the length of the meeting uh to the August seventeenth meeting, but that training will focus on how staff prepares an agenda item, agenda item and uh the reasoning behind the analysis. That's it for me.
Thank you, Nate. Closing item number eight and moving on to item number nine, commissioners' suggestions for future agenda items. Anybody got any good ideas? All right, closing item number nine, moving on to item number ten, public comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment. Heather, uh, any more public comment, request to speak forms?
No, no more public comment, uh, request to speak forms, correspondence, or voicemails.
All right, closing public comment and moving on to item eleven, adjournment.
So moved.
All right.
Second.
All in favor? All right.
All right.
Thanks, guys.
Good night.